Good evening and welcome to the ISD 191 Burnsville, Eagan Savage School Board Meeting, the 2nd of September. The date today is September 24th, 2020, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'd like to welcome people who are joining us at home. This is our first hybrid board meeting model. We have board members both and staff, both in attendance here at Diamond Head, and we also have board members and staff joining us remotely. So here's the technology. Director Hu, would you please lead us in the sense of a little bit?
......................................................
Thank you. We'll start tonight by approving the agenda. I will take a motion. So moved by Director Schatz, seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Hurrier?
Aye.
Guillaume?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Schatz?
Aye.
Chester?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Starting off tonight, we will receive reports. The first is from Dr. Battle. We will receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and MDH, respectively. Dr. Battle?
Thank you Chair Alt, the working of the board. Tonight, once again, I will share information related to the four primary areas of our planning: health and safety, academics, student and family support, operations, and staff professional development. After my report, you will receive a presentation regarding community education, food and nutrition, and transportation. I start with today's county health numbers. These numbers for confirmed cases in Dakota and Scott County per 100,000 residents is from the time period 8:30 to 9:12. Dakota County dropped to 15.78 from the last two weeks, 21.28, and Scott County also dropped to 15.07 from 17.65. I'm still recommending that we stay in the hybrid learning model and continue to offer our virtual academy. Next, academic guidance, school planning. Starting with the virtual academy, teachers are focused on relationships and connections with structural routines for live classes and how to use the devices. Curriculum materials for all elementary hybrid pods have been ordered and expected that all materials will be distributed by the end of next week. Quite a storage organizational issue when all these materials were coming in. Materials distribution for virtual academy students will begin September 30. Professional development for the use of the online supplemental programs continues. In many cases, it is on-demand training online, and these programs do include our math, elementary math, middle school math, language arts, science and social studies, which is Study Island, academic support for English learners, Exact Path, music, smart music, and high school videos showing Swank. Moving on to activities. As many of you are aware, on Monday, September 21st, the Minnesota State High School Board met to review their previous decision to move volleyball and football to spring. The Minnesota State High School Board voted to reverse course and permit volleyball and football as fall sports. Teams are permitted to begin practice this coming Monday, September 28th, with competition starting in about two weeks. The number of contests are reduced and playoff models are yet to be determined. Our high school activities team continues to monitor implications, including having spectators. There has been guidance from Minnesota State High School Board that in-person spectators are not allowed for volleyball because it's indoors, and it is maxed at 250 spectators for football outdoors. Again, we will work with the team at Burnsville High School for many more specifics to be released to students, coaches, and families. As with any activity, we must have COVID plans in place for practices and games, and those are being created, and they will be approved by our lead nurse. For football, the intention for the tickets is to go to immediate family, but we will get more specific information. For volleyball, we do know that the schedule will consist of around and a half with South suburban conference-only opponents. We are also working with BCTV for coverage once the schedule is out for volleyball. Enrollment. Our overall enrollment numbers continue to slowly decline, and this is mainly due to that kindergarten area of decline. Many families are choosing to wait a year to have a more normal kindergarten experience, and that is being experienced across the nation. This is the first week where the enrollment numbers at virtual academy declined, but the hybrid enrollment increased. Now I'll turn it over to Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, for an update from community education, food service, and transportation. Lisa?
Thank you and good evening. I'm going to turn this over to Tom Blumhofer, who is attending virtually, so he can speak regarding the community education and talk a little bit about what it is that we have happening in that department at this time.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you Chair Alt. Thank you Chair Alt, Directors, Superintendent Battle. I appreciate the opportunity to inundate you with some of the great things that are going on in the Community Education Department. I will preface this by saying some of these photographs are pre-COVID, and some of them are pre-required masks as well. So you will see a couple that don't seem to fit the mark, but they were taken in advance of our current situation. So bear with us there. Also want to let you know there are some embedded links in the slide presentation that you can glean some further information on some of the senior correspondence that's going out from the center, summer school, and a nice article about childcare in the local paper. So appreciate the opportunity to speak with you a little bit tonight. I did want to say that the internal giving has begun already, and it will run through May 28th, and staff are all aware of that, and we're receiving lots of support already. So that's pretty exciting news. We also met Bob briefly this week as the team and had some real discussion about our catalog. You know, given those current circumstances, we were curious about the paper piece, and honestly, we're getting a lot of feedback from our community, and in particular from our senior citizens. They really liked the paper. We're about, well, we're way less than half of what our normal catalog size is, but they really like to have the paper piece in hand, is what we're hearing. They really liked the opportunity for the hands-on activities. They've gotten enough of the online computer screen stuff for themselves and for their children, and our programming that has excelled to date really reflects that. So I'll speak to that a little bit as I go through the presentation. Really quickly, though, early childhood, VPK in-person, and virtual academy is going great right now. We have over 100 virtual and 125 hybrid students in our elementary buildings. We're basically about 85% capacity. I'm limited only by the new class size limit set up and imposed by the state. So that's really good news, really good reports from our families on the success and that they're finding in these classes. Diamond Head, we are full for preschool classes. Early childhood, mix of virtual and hybrid classes for families. It has started off slow. Families are a little reluctant on the virtual side for the early childhood family education piece, but it's picking up, and we really feel that it will continue to grow. So a slow start is really not unexpected because that's really all about face-to-face and asking, you know, your neighbor sitting next to you some questions as well. So it will pick up. Our screening, we're adapting to the new guidelines laid down by the state, and I think that's going to go just fine. I think overall, early childhood has seen a really strong positive response to the programming that we've offered and the fashion in which we've offered. So our teachers are very excited for the start of the year. They're having great success. If you'll notice, our summer school, there's a link embedded in the presentation on the summer school surveys. Those are very interesting reading. I encourage you to look at those afterwards. You can see that a little child on the right, he had his gloves on during summer school. That was pre-required mask, but, and same with the young man in the middle in the Vikings jersey. But our program is very successful this summer. We had very good turnout. We had very good success. We got very good response from our community, from our parents, from our students, and our staff. All the survey information is contained, and I think you'll find it a good read if you want to look into it. The youth service department over at the high school, clearly we don't have as many students in there as we normally have, but what we do have, we're taking the opportunity to put those students to work in varying places that are safe and accessible and appropriate within our community. We just had another produce pantry tonight at Diamond Head. We sent out 129 boxes, almost 450, I believe, was the number of people and families that we served, and I had four high school students from Courtney Flowback over at the high school who came over and volunteered their time, did a phenomenal job. So we're getting them back in. We're getting them to preregister for our Brain Power to Backpack Pack, and so it's picking up, but it's a tough piece to have when you really need those students around. And transportation is difficult for many kids, and so we're trying to find some ways around that for them. Looking ahead to the Ready to Grow, Ready to Learn preschool, Project Kids, School Age Care, Ready to Grow, Ready to Learn, we've got 65 families, and we are still growing. Project Kids has over 300 students district-wide. There's over 150 enrolled between MW Savage and Sioux Trail. Actually, I got updated numbers today from just Tuesday, so it continues to climb. We want to make sure that we reach out to everybody. It is every family that we're serving. We are not just serving the tier-one families. We are serving everybody in the community that needs childcare, and we encourage families to get online or to call our office and to seek out the information that you might need for that. We are helping kids with their homework assignments. That is a dedicated part of our day. We have an incorporated art gym and science into the daily routine, so kids are getting a lot of participation in a variety of different activities, and they're getting a lot of help with their distance learning, and it's going quite well. Our staff is doing an amazing job at Project Kids and Ready to Grow, Ready to Learn. It's phenomenal to watch. So that's great. There's also a childcare article linked that I'll embed in there. That's for the last couple of weeks. It came out. It highlights us basically from March, April, May, June, July, and August. There's a wonderful piece there on food service as well. Both of those departments have excelled. They've done phenomenal work in the face of really daunting odds. I couldn't be more proud to be a part of that team. So another piece that we're really looking forward to trying is a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade childcare program. I've got a lot of questions from families, interest in providing something like that. So we're looking at building some kind of a model, and we have the perfect venues in either Sioux Trail and/or MW Savage to provide that opportunity, along with the distance learning and everything else. So we are currently working on that and looking to make that a reality. At least you can go to the next one. ABE, we've got over 300 students enrolled in our ABE program right now, on pace with the same number of students we had last year at this time. And you'll see that graduation picture down there. While it's very cute, it's also pre-COVID. It's last year. So just to make sure we're all on board with that. We've got morning and afternoon hybrid small groups. We've got Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, distance learning. We've got evening classes, hybrid in-person classes, citizenship, computer, specialized ABE classes. They're all a mixture of hybrid and distance learning. We are almost complete in getting the process of having all of our ABE students have access to an email address through the district, so we can push out all kinds of additional information, opportunities. Many of our students are looking for jobs within the school district, and we've employed quite a number of them actually who've graduated from our program or are currently working through our ABE program. It's a wonderful opportunity for them to gain some experience too, especially specific times of day when their children might actually be in one of our care programs or preschool programs. So it's great, great to see that. Having access to emails is just a huge leap forward for the ABE program, and I couldn't be more thankful for our technology department for helping to make that a reality for us. So thank you. Moving into the Brain Power to Backpack and Pantry 191 and Fresh Produce, we have been doing a ton of work since March, and the numbers are staggering. And I debated long and hard about what to include in my presentation, but a brief overview. $67,000 raised in donations in 19 to '24, Brain Power to Backpack, 28,800 bags packed at 37 different after-school packs at the high school. It's huge, and that's the lion's share. Those are high school kids coming down and participating, and we know for a fact that some of those kids have family members who are getting these packs. It is just, it's so hard to even see that in action. I absolutely love it. We've had over 1,800 volunteers with over 2,100 hours of volunteer time, which is a huge number, huge number. And then for the school year, we packed 115,000 meals for kids. Pantry 191, which is our newest addition I referenced, we've served over 1,568 persons with 50,184 meals, and you will see a picture on your screen there. That's an average bag that's packed. We try to pack for a family of four that they can make at least four meals out of it. That is the shelf-stable part of the pantry 191. If you look at the little picture on the left, you'll see those are actually onions, but we get onions, potatoes, and bread along with that. So we were able to send that bag home with every family, in addition to the vegetables that we get and the bread that we get, two times a month from Diamond Head and that four other school locations, one time a month through the school district. The produce packs today was peppers, apples, tomatoes, about softball-sized tomatoes. We had watermelons, and we have, oh, for life me, I can't think of what it's called. It's a spread. It's hummus. We had a ton of that donated to us, and the food pack is incredible. The cost to us is about six to eight cents per pound. So the fundraising that we've been doing, the money that we've been receiving, that goes to support the pantry program and the Brain Power to Backpack program. So those have been extremely successful. And then Fresh Produce will run August, let's see, Saturday and August. It'll end October 8th, and October 22nd will be the last two produce distributions, and then it will be the bi-weekly regular pantry through the rest of the school year, in addition to Brain Power to Backpack. Our general enrichment classes are going well, the ones that are in-person, the driver's ed, the summer sports camp, anything where we had bodies, live bodies in action. They seem to be really, really positive. Virtual classes have not been so good. And again, as I mentioned earlier, people are mentioning that, you know, they're tired of the computer, and we get that. And so we're trying to create opportunities where we can have people actually onsite in-person. Senior activities have picked up at the senior center, dance programs, yoga. We have virtual chess teams, and that's picking up as we speak. I love it because we've got coaches from around the country who could be virtual, and that's really a positive piece. The virtual business classes and certification courses are okay. 55 alive, senior driving is going through the roof. We have some classes in senior center that have probably, well, conservatively, 400% increase over the same time last year, just because people can actually come out and participate. Our facilities program is going quite well. We've done a phenomenal job of renting out our facilities and utilizing our facilities for internal and external groups. We've actually employed a couple of additional staff whose job it is to be the 191 liaison at any event that's booked in a 191 facility. So they are there to work with the renter and ensure that they are following their COVID preparedness plan and helping him to manage that and making sure that they're staying on task and on track. And our facilities, we've done a very nice job of renting them out. Kristi Myers has done a phenomenal job of reaching out to people and making sure that we've got everything that we need to serve their needs, and we have worked very closely with Bernie Bean and Guillaume and David Lake to make sure that we are not exceeding any of the maximums. In fact, we are actually operating our programs slightly less than the maximums to make sure that we're easing our way into this and experiencing what we need to find out so that we are not overextending ourselves and not getting ourselves into trouble. And it has gone very well, very well. Great success. Senior Center, 2,000 comfort calls a week, and you will see a link as well to that, that I will get included. Over 650 e-newsletters sent out every week. Our seniors are really coming back in. They had their first fun and friendship meeting today. It was phenomenal to see everybody there. I haven't seen them for months, almost eight months. Foot care appointments, sunrise stretch, Tai Chi, painting classes. They are really growing, and they're growing within the constraints that we provide. So we have more sections, but we have fewer people in each section. Lots of cleaning going on in between, and they're doing a phenomenal job keeping up on that. Everybody that goes to the senior center must be preregistered. We need to be able to make sure that we can track everybody coming in and out. Historically, there have been a lot of opportunities to the senior center where folks can just drop in and participate, but we cannot do that anymore. So that program has done a wonderful job of turning on a dime and coming around and really providing a lot of opportunities. Just in closing, I'd like to say it's been a long, been a long few months since March yet, and our staff have done a phenomenal job, and I just couldn't be more pleased to be part of their team. So I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm here for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for that awesome report regarding what's happening in community education. We appreciate all of the updated information, and there's so much happening, so we encourage you to check into it. As we talk about food and nutrition, our Director of Food and Nutrition, Julie Quonbatter, is not able to attend today, and she has a family commitment, so I'm sitting in for her. We do want to give a very special shout-out to our food and nutrition employees. Some of them have been working nonstop since mid-March through the summer. So much has been changing on such a very quick timeframe, and we very much appreciate all that these employees have put forward for effort and time and commitment to continue feeding our families in ISD 191. One of the things that we want to talk about with regard to food and nutrition is making sure everyone is aware of the information around the summer food service program. We are serving until December 31st or until the buns run out, meals to all ages 1 through 18, free at Eagle Ridge Middle School, Niklet Middle School, and Ron Kirk Side between 11:00 AM, excuse me, and 1:30 PM. All the students who are attending school in the hybrid model are also receiving those free meals then while they are at school. So we're very happy that we are able to do that through the program, but we also are aware that that's going to quickly be changing. And so when that does occur, families will want to make sure that if they are eligible for free reduced eligible meals, they need to have that application piece filled out. We encourage everyone to get that filled out in October if you haven't yet already, to make sure that, first of all, that you have the benefits that you'll need once the federal program ends and we're back to our national lunch, breakfast, lunch program. Additionally, the numbers that we have in this fall's October counts for free or reduced eligible families. Those are numbers that are used in funding formulas by our state of Minnesota in determining our funding for our school district, ISD 191, two years down the road. So it's very critical to us that we also have families. If you're eligible, fill out the form, and that would really really help us out also at ISD 191 for future programming. If you are wondering where to find that, on the website under services, food services, left side is the application for educational benefits. So please be sure to check into that if that makes sense for you. I'm going to now turn it over to Dave Lake, who's also attending the meeting virtually. Dave Lake is our Director of Operations, Properties, and Transportation.
Board Chair Alt, Board Members, and Superintendent Battle, I'm happy to report that our first weeks of transportation have been a huge success. We have roughly 60 buses running routes on both A and B days, all while maintaining safety and practicing proper health protocols. A staff member meets each bus, both morning and afternoon, at all sites to take attendance, which is given to our health offices for contact tracing purposes. Our students are masked up while they travel from home to school and back home again. Please allow me a moment to thank our transportation team and recognize their hard work. We have been meeting with both Schmitty &amp; Sons and CISO on a weekly basis since July to prepare for the challenges of this upcoming school year. Schmitty &amp; Sons brought in their drivers all weekend before the start of school to run practice routes to ensure efficiency and safety. With the virtual academy numbers changing by the hour, CISO brought in extra routers and literally worked 24 hours a day for our families. For this year, our team worked to create seating charts and attendance logs to deliver our students safely while maintaining social distancing. Thank you, Schmitty &amp; Sons, CISO, and our entire transportation team.
Thank you very much, Dave. That concludes our reporting here for.
Thank you, Lisa, Tom, and Dave. And Chair Alt, Directors, that concludes the COVID-19 report for this.
Always a full report. Thanks. Thanks to everybody for filling all this updated information together. Board members, any comments or questions? Director Chester?
Yeah, just for clarification for the meal pickups at the two middle schools and at Ron Elementary, that is Wednesdays only?
Thank you for that clarification. It is Wednesdays only that those meals are available. You can get multiple numbers of meals if that's available and needed for your family.
Thank you. Director Schatz?
I actually just want to say thank you to everyone who's put together the reporting for this, but also everyone who's truly stepped up and worked so hard to adjust to what is an extremely difficult and fluctuating situation day-to-day. So my thanks to Superintendent Battle and her team and everyone working on these preparations to make sure that our school year is the best it can be for our kids. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Director Hu?
I second everything Darcy said, but I do have a question. Dr. Battle, I believe I heard you say that the virtual academy enrollment is down this week and hybrid enrollment is up a little bit. Are those two things related? Are people transitioning from the virtual academy to the hybrid?
Thank you, Director Hu and members of the board. I think, yes, they are related. We're trying to be very accommodating. As you know, we do have students with varying educational needs, such as special education needs. Stacy Sobine is on the call if he would like to add some additional information.
Yeah, our enrollment as a whole went down, probably about 15 students, I believe, over the week. We saw a slight uptick in our hybrid and a little bit of decline in our virtual academy. This is the first week that we've seen either of those type of enrollment trends or changes. What we have been noticing, quite frankly, is the virtual academy has been the highest enrollment trend, increasing, I should say. It's been increasing the most. This is the first time that the two have switched. And we'll just have to see over the next few weeks if that continues or not.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I second Director Schatz's comments. This is pulling together this information and showing, you know, everything that everybody is doing. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, and we're doing everything that we can for our students. So thanks to everybody. And I guess I just also wanted to reiterate Lisa's call-out on applying for educational benefits, that it's really, it really goes beyond simply the food, the food that's provided either at reduced rates or free of charge. It really makes a difference to the operations and the funding of the school district. And so simply reporting on the reality of your financial situation is really the best thing to do, both for you and your family and for our school district. So please don't hesitate. With that, we will turn to committee, board appointment, and school assignment reports, and we'll start with Director Chester, who chairs the Policy Review Committee.
Thank you, Chair Alt. Yes, the Policy Review Committee met two weeks ago, and what we're bringing forward today on the business agenda on a first-rating basis is changes to Policy 302, Use of Peace Officers in Crisis Times During Students with Diabetes from School Grounds. And then we're bringing forward a couple new policies regarding student fundraising, Policy 50511, and 905 for advertising. And then in conjunction with and 905 for advertising. And then in conjunction with that, because it does correlate with references to policy 706, acceptance of gifts.
Thank you. Next, Director Schatz, who chairs the Negotiations Committee. There is no report from the Negotiations Committee. Thank you. And Director Miller, would you like to, is there any?
Actually.
Or Director Hume?
You can let the last committee, yes, we met, the legislative committee met on Monday of this week. And received an update from Dr. Battle on the legislative process for getting approval. Should we decide to sell any of our properties and what that would mean for us.
Great.
So it was a short meeting, but that was what we talked about.
Awesome. Thank you. And Student Performance and Achievement Committee of the whole. We are, we've looked at a proposed calendar of meetings for, I think at least through January, possibly for the whole year. Officers will be reviewing that and figuring out what's, you know, we'll come up with something in the next month or so to report back to everybody. Are there any other reports, either from board appointments or school assignments?
I have a Foundation 191 report.
Director Hume.
So Foundation 191 had its annual retreat on Friday, August 28th. And its September monthly meeting was held on Tuesday, September 15th at the Environmental Learning Center in San Antonio. While I was unable to attend the retreat in August, I did attend the meeting last week. Like many of us, Foundation 191 is focusing on how to keep its work moving forward at the time of COVID. To that end, the Foundation 191 is planning their first Halloween for Trance for Treat fundraiser for Saturday, October 31st in 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. right here at Diamond Education, Diamond Head Education Center. Children will receive a bag of treats upon their arrival and will receive additional treats. Winners of the classic cards will also be in attendance. The 2:00 to 2:30 p.m. time slot will be reserved for participants with special medical needs or who are at higher risk. Cost is $5 per person and advanced registration is required in order to ensure appropriate social distancing during each 30-minute time slot. You can find out more at foundation191.org or on the Foundation's Facebook page.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Currier, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I have my standard two reports. The one on AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. Their September meeting was held on September 4th and the presentation was by Peter Leatherman of Morrison Leatherman. And I went to the AMSD website today to review it and it wasn't there. So of course I've contacted them. It was very interesting because of course it was a report of statistics and information on Minnesota. So I will let the board know when that appears on the AMSD website. But a reminder to board members, the AMSD website is chock full of information for you to review. And so I urge you to check out that website every once in a while. I also have a report on 917. The August and September meetings have always been a bit unusual for intermediate 917 as it has tried to capture the start of the new school year. This year had an even more unusualness to it. We had a special meeting on September 1st to have the first reading of a new policy, the COVID-19 face covering policy. We wanted to have the second reading at our regular meeting on September 8th before the beginning of the school year. So it would be in place before school began. There is lots of information regarding how the district is handling the COVID challenge on the website as well as this new policy is located in the policy section. The highlights of the September 8th meeting included the second reading of the COVID face policy, a review and approval of a plan for respirator masks, a review of district leadership goals for the 2021 school year, and lastly, a resolution honoring and mourning the loss of Deb Clark, who had served 917 for over 13 years representing South St. Paul. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Currier. Any other reports? Seeing none, we will move to the business portion of our meeting, to the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Is there anything that board members would like to separate? Seeing none, I will take a motion. Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Hume.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Schatz.
Aye.
Chester. Currier.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Turning to new business, we're back with Lisa Ryder. We're being asked to approve LTFM adjusted budget plan for FY '22. Welcome back, Lisa.
Thank you. On June 11th is when the board last looked at our LTFM project. This is the Long Term Facility Maintenance project list, and we provided a 10-year listing that was then submitted to MDE for purposes of development of our levy certification, which is also before the discussion tonight. Patent reviewing our levy certification and taking a closer look at some of the upcoming projects that we have, we believe it's in our best interest to combine with the Tuminus Project or Eagle Ridge Middle School at the same time that we're doing the other work that is already scheduled for this next year as well, the LTFM project plan. Therefore, given that, there's an anticipated added cost for the project that has been suggested and included now in the 2122 school year approval for an extra $435,560 and an additional $65,000 for concrete work district-wide. Those items are totaling $500,560. So the proposal before you in this resolution includes an increase to our long-term facility maintenance plan for one year, which is the 2122 school year. The other year's totals will remain the same. Because we're moving up these projects, we would backfill them with other projects that are, are natural at this time. So therefore, the long-term facility maintenance program budget would now be $2,539,440. With this addition, $409,780 continues to remain the amalas for health and safety projects. And the difference then is, is all LTFM for the fiscal year of 2122. So tonight before you at this time, that is this resolution approving the revised Independent School District 191's Long Term Facility Maintenance Program budget and authorizing the inclusion of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. This will change the next item on the agenda, which is the certification of a levy by the amounts just described. And so that's what you see on the screen is the one page that is the summary off that 40-page document. The summary then shows that at this moment, it's not included because it does not yet board approved. So should the board approve this, we would be adding the $500,560 to the total amount in the page 2021 column. And that would then result in a, instead of it being 4.27% decrease in the general fund, it would be a .03% decrease. Overall, it would be that instead of a .84 other percent decrease, it would be essentially zero change from the previous year. And so that is, that's for the next agenda. I know that I did want you to understand the impact that this particular resolution does, does have. So with that, then, the recommendation is that the Board of Education adopts the resolution approving the revised Long Term Facility Maintenance Program budget for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Lisa. I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Director Schatz, I'm sorry. Masks mufflers. Is there, are there any questions or discussion?
I just have one comment. I appreciate, you know, the willingness to reflect on what we're doing and how we might do things differently. So it's not to disrupt the whole school community twice and just to do it in, in, you know, one fell swoop. So thank you for that.
Ms. Kenny, will you please read the roll?
Miller.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Schatz.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Currier.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Staying with Lisa, the next item, we're being asked to certify the proposed tax levy payable in 2021 and set the date of the truth in taxation hearing.
Thank you. So as you see on the screen, this is the whole summary page. I've discussed that in numbers, but the process as the stands is every September, we receive a report from MDE and every school district does receive this. And it tells us basically how much of our revenue would be generated then by levy dollars. And that's a levy that taxpayers are paying in in the calendar year of 2021, which, which is why it says payable 2021, it's the calendar year. We receive those funds then for the fiscal year for us of 2122. So before you tonight, we typically in September recommend that the board approve this at a, what they term maximum amount. And what that means is then if there's any slight adjustments to formulas or anything in that entry on a statewide level, then the total amount that comes before you in December for your final certification would be reflective of those amounts. The alternative is that you would approve this at a wide item dollar amount, which then does not necessarily allow for any of those types of adjustments that may be made. So we recommend, and I, the recommendation is that the Board of Education certify the proposed property tax levy for taxes payable in 2021 and authorize the clerk to execute the levy certification forms in their maximum amount. And to also schedule the truth in taxation hearing on December 10th, 2020, to be held during the regularly scheduled board meeting beginning at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you. I will take a motion to approve. So moved, moved by Director Chester, second. Director Schatz first, Director Chester second. Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Alt.
Aye.
Schatz.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Currier.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're turning to policies with Stephanie White, Director of Student Support Services. We're being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to policy 532, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IDPs from the school grounds. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Alt, Directors, and Superintendent Battle. Tonight, I'm here to present the first reading for policy 532. This policy helps guide our work as we are supporting students during a potential crisis situation. And the alignment that, on the changes that are being made are towards the end of the policy, which helps align the practices that the Minnesota Department of Ed is asking us to do. And it is specifically on how we report our data under the guidance that they provided us. And so when we use restrictive procedures in our buildings, we have to report those four times a year. And this update to the policy puts those specific dates and timelines within it.
Thank you very much. And I already read the recommendation, so I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Schatz.
Aye.
Chester.
Aye.
Currier.
Aye.
Hume.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Finally, we're back to Lisa Ryder. We're being asked to approve on a first reading basis, new policies 511, student fundraising, and 905, advertising, and non-substantive changes to policy 706, acceptance of gifts.
Thank you, Chair Hall, Board Directors, and Superintendent Battle. We have these three policies coming before me together in a group as they find themselves kind of connecting at various different times. And in many cases, there's cross-referencing happening. So we'll start with the 511, which is the student fundraising. And as you can see, that this policy is, is attempting to lay out the guidelines for how fundraisers are to be conducted. We do not currently have a student fundraising policy. And there is a necessity for us to create one. We know fundraising is happening. We just now need to put the framework in place so that we can monitor, track, and report back to you on exactly what that looks like. So as you can see here, under responsibility of 3A, anywhere where it says superintendent or designee, you're also suggesting that a fundraiser must be conducted in a manner, manner, that will protect the privacy and dignity of individual students, employees, and the school. The language otherwise in this policy is MSBA model language. Letter C, however, we are including here against superintendent or designee is responsible for providing the coordination throughout the district as deemed appropriate. The other thing I want to point out is at the end of the policy 511, under number four, annual report, you recently had 713 come before you, which was around student activity accounting. And we talked then about student activity groups wanting to do fundraising. So similar to that language in that particular policy, we, we created basically the same verbiage here. The administration will prepare a fundraising report semi-annually, which will be reviewed at the school board in May and November. So we would look to bring that forward for both student activities as well as regular school activities related to fundraising. The report will list the activity, the type of the fundraiser, timing, purpose, and results. As I mentioned, we do not have this policy in play yet. And so as we work to develop this, you'll be getting your first report, but it might be pretty small compared to what we can see in the future, but at least we'll get that process rolling. Under cross-references, we did also reference here the 713 policy, given that this is very similar in nature. Moving on to the next policy. 905 is advertising. And under this policy, we made sure there was a definition here related to advertising and calling up the fact that it means the action of calling something to the attention of the public, I paid announcements. Sorry, I missed the purpose here. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance for the advertising or promoting of products or services. We know we have this happening across the district. We also need to just kind of get our hands around that a little bit more. So the guidelines here are intended to basically remind people of the fact that we must follow our district policies to have our site administrators more involved in that understanding of what is, is happening with the advertising and to make sure that we're being responsible for what that content might be. And anywhere there's a superintendent, we've added or designee. Under letter C, under number four, we have no advertising, which promotes external competing entities, especially as it relates to enrollment, athletics, and activities for the district will be allowed. Letter D, we are making mention of the fact that we need to make sure we're following that policy 706, acceptance of gifts. policy 706, acceptance of gifts. And other references to superintendent or designee under letters, the new letter F. Under, I guess it would be five, is the accounting. And so this does state that we do have a special source code we use for purposes of tracking advertising revenue. So that's been in place for some time. But should that amount exceed $1,000 annually, which it has not in the past few years, then we would also then need to make sure that we have that periodic report to the board. In addition, we are also adding to this particular policy some cross-referencing for policy 421. Let's see, and I believe we're also adding 702 and 706. The basis again of that 905 was also MSBA model language. Moving on to 706, the final of the three policies. We have not changed this policy, this was an existing policy of ours, we have just modified the cross-references at the bottom to include 511 and 905.
Thank you. I will take a motion to approve these policies.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Questions or comments? Director Miller?
Yes, thank you. So first of all, the, looking at the, in order you went, the donation, donations, our student fundraising. So this is a new policy for us, correct?
Correct.
And I just want to clarify, because there's red lines in here. I assume that mean you took an MSBA template, these are the adjustments that you're making to the MSBA template, right?
Correct.
Okay. So if anybody is here doing this, will understand that. It's a little confusing because it's a new policy, but and so this applies to anybody, any student organization, okay, so booster scripts would be encompassed in this?
No, this does not include our, this includes ISD 191, in which now because our student activity is under board control, it includes our student activities. But it does not include parent teacher organizations, it does not include boosters. We encourage them to follow similar, but essentially they do their fundraising, and then they would be working through our donations policy as they determine the money coming into our school district through that process.
Okay, but the, their actions, we would not receive a report of their actions.
Because the report you receive would not include the actions of PTO or boosters.
Okay, I think that's it for the fundraising. Can I ask a related follow-up? Just to clarify, the boosters and the PTO, that's because they are separate 511, 33s, is that right?
Yes, they have their own tax ID number, there are, there are restrictions around how much fundraising we can do before sales tax is required. And so they must follow those rules for their organization, and we must follow those rules for our organization. And this policy is only applying to that which we are doing and conducting under our tax ID number.
I'm just curious, you have an example of what fundraising already occurs that's outside the scope of boosters, or, I mean, obviously BAC and such are all entirely different PTOs and such too, like, like, what are we doing outside, I'm curious, like?
I'm not sure if I
What other kind of fundraising are we doing that's outside of the scope of boosters and are we, is there team fundraising going on?
So I think that there are, there are opportunities in which activities for fundraising that fall under the gambling can sometimes be conducted through a certain licensure, but we don't do that like within our ISD 191, and we would not be doing those particular types of, of fundraising, but other entities may choose to do so.
Well, I was just asking you about currently, you imply that we know, we know other things, weird things are going on. What are we currently raising money for that's not under the confines of like booster club or a, or a PTO or?
I just meant that we're not tracking and monitoring it because our process doesn't necessarily
Like a lot of stuff is something?
Right, so like that's, but that's a, right, that's a booster club, you know, for the ride scheme and so that doesn't fall under this.
All I'm saying is that if we, in current climate, current activities, this report's going to be very small, I believe.
Right, I think that's what you said.
It depends on the student activity group, so like Jamie Club, maybe you want to bring somebody to, get something for their club activity that, so it'd be something that isn't probably related or core, or show a booster.
I understand that, I just, I would, I think that the way that the district is structured right now, most of these activities occur in the booster type organizations as well.
I, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah, I and is there any addressing the issue of, of the ability to earmark these? So if a group raises a certain amount of money, they can say it has to go to this costume, or that helmet, or that computer, or whatever?
Right, so as you looked at the 713 policy, it said that if a student activity account, a group of student activities, let me say this differently, if a student activity group is doing a fundraiser, their funds must be tracked for their group, okay, and, and used for that purpose. So that's, that's still true in the case. If we have, say, say middle schools doing a fundraiser, you know, we're going to internally track that fundraising money under the middle school, and we're going to track it that way when we record it. It's going to show up on our fundraising report as, as being a middle school fundraiser and such like that. If they choose not to use those funds in the school year, then it would need to either fall under the committed funds that would be tracked moving forward and approved for such, which would require them to have that communication and, and make sure that that's, that's understood. If you have someone who is wanting to donate funds for a particular person, then that falls under the donation policy, and then you can do restricted gifts that way too.
So this is relative to, I don't see any reference of this cash or in-kind donations, which encompasses so all?
So our process for donations will have a method, it currently, everything's going to a Google sheet that Jamie is tracking, and you see that report. We're looking to connect the cash-related stuff all to an e-commerce on the website, and so we have training happening this, this month for our staff to be able to build particular codes and measures for people to be able to donate cash through the website, and that will allow things to be more connected with the finances and the reporting being all one. And that's one of the steps that we haven't had up to date. So we'll continue the Google sheet for purposes of the, of the donations in kind or for non-cash donations, but then for cash donations, it would fall under a website purpose where we can actually show those deposits being made.
Well, I apologize if I'm about to open a can of worms, but every year, every classroom asks for a long list of items from each student coming in. How does that fit into the, you know, raising funds, if there, those are
That's a, a fine example of why we want to get this policy in play. And what we would hope to do is add a, with the principal's involvement, we would build somewhat, like we did with the field trips, is kind of a matrix. So at grade levels, what is it that we're looking for and need for donations, and how might we conduct that so that we can actually look a little differently and be more easily tracked and, and traceable? And so that is yet to be built, and, and, you know, come to fruition, but this is our starting point of being able to kind of get our hands around that.
So the policy's intent is that all of those activities would ultimately fall into that report?
That's the goal, that is the goal, that we can have a measure for that. So if you can imagine, you'd go to the website, you'd see my classroom at this particular school, and I could see a list of all the things that are needed, and I put instead of carting everything there, potentially we just donate the cash, and then that, that would be something then that we could then purchase and bulk, for example, and, and deliver then to the classrooms. So
It is an unfortunate reality, the world we live in, that we even have to do that. It's always bugs that hack out of me, but I, I do caution that we don't put too many barriers in the way of getting teachers off their feet on the first day of class, beginning of school year, because those items have become critical to the maintenance of their classrooms.
Absolutely.
Then just over to the, the other new one, again, the same, I just knowing that it's got a lot of lineups on, and I, that's because we're moving away from the, what we started being a SPA template, and, or adjustment to that. Is this okay, that just means, something to apply paid announcements, so this does not, this is only for paid announcements, this does not encompass non-paid announcements or the requested, just other placements in, in publications or?
That's the meaning of advertising, this does reference school publications, so like if you've got a, a sports flyer for the game, for example, and you have someone sponsoring it, we're asking then in, under 4A, you know, how that needs to be determined, or what the verbiage needs to look like. And the fact that those types of things, they can happen, it's just a matter of sometimes it's not so much cash that's transacting there, it's more about, let me sponsor the cost of creating those particular flyers for that A kind of thing, right?
But if a hockey club wants to announce that, you know, season's starting, and they wanted to get those, we don't have Friday Foul, which is the most important one, but in the equivalent to each school, that's not a paid advertisement, there's no cash transaction there. No, like, so is that encompassed in this, in this?
Well, it's partly why we've moved away, and that kind of falls under that other policy related to, you know, distribution materials, but if we're talking about we just don't do many flower flyers anymore that way, right? So that's more e-news type, that, that message can go out. Let's say a box of pencils are delivered, and they're, they all have advertising on them, things of that nature, I mean, that can be an in-kind donation that now has advertising on it, which is why you see this coming together. You know, it's really between all three of these policies is to get across the message of, you know, the, the advertising that is there needs to be appropriate, it needs to avoid certain types of things. And it could be a donation that's in, in kind, and so we want them to understand that too as well. And, you know, something might be a fundraiser where something's donated, and the purpose of it is to actually resell that material potentially, so it just depends on kind of how that looks, that's why the three of them are coming together. The intent is not necessarily to get too heavy into all the different types of advertising that might exist, it's more of a general policy to just serve as an overarching expectation, guidance.
Section A has a note about the site administrator is responsible for screening all such advertisements for appropriateness. Then section B goes on to say the superintendent or designee may approve advertising. So I'm just curious about if, if the site administrator is, say, a principal at, you know, a school, and there's a dispute, is, is it assumed that that process will follow the normal chain of command and move up to the superintendent's office then? Okay.
Yep.
So it doesn't necessarily have to die with the site administrator if there's a disagreement about appropriateness or whatever, okay. And then I think the only other thing I just, I would just call out, that, you know, it's important that everyone understands the last point, H, I guess it is under whole, or, yeah, four, that the inclusion of advertising in school district facilities does not constitute approval or endorsement of any products, that's good that you have that information. All right, that ends my thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I, I have some.
Director Courier?
Yes, back
Oh, you're muted or something. Director Courier, your, your mic.
The crunch through them, was there a process where this principals or, or others looked at this policy or before it came to the policy committee?
So Director Courier, I did not hear the original part of your conversation, but I'm understanding your question to be whether or not 905 has gone through the review by principals prior to coming to the policy committee, is that correct?
Yes, did 511 have worked before it came to the policy committee?
Actually, no, 511 has months ago, that we talked about with principals, when we had had discussions in previous, actually, previous years even, related to student fundraising. We do have a small subset committee that is working on donations, fundraising, and advertising, and so they are the ones who have helped us, and they are representations of the different levels of principalship. So they, along with Kathy Funston and Robin and I, have worked to try and identify how can we work with the e-commerce opportunities we have on our website to be able to manage the the cash portion of this, as well as then also utilize Google and other forums to be able to document the non-cash and other needs. So in whole, the framework that we've been working on to be able to deliver on these policies has been something that we've worked very closely with that core group. But with everything else happening for our principals at this point, time, time has not been spent in the last four months on this conversation, it's been longer than that.
Okay. Does, is, I worry the most about the middle school level, like now. For example, a junior high or a middle school dance event where lots of cash comes in, would that be considered a fundraiser?
So if it is a fundraiser by a particular student group, like let's say it's the student council at a middle school, then that fundraiser that they're conducting would generate the revenue that would go directly into their account for that purpose. If it happened to be a school-wide fundraiser, then it would be tracked and monitored by that school itself in the appropriate codes that we have available to them. The whole point of our framework and these policies coming before the board at this time is really to try and have a means and a mechanism to be able to accurately report what it looks like for fundraising and for our donations.
Okay. And, and the reason I, I brought that up is I know some of those events, especially the middle school level, those events, that amount of cash that comes in is sometimes huge. And the, the reporting, that twice-a-year reporting might get to be cumbersome, in other words, I would monitor this, this this policy and see if it works, or if it needs to be fine-tuned. I, I know when I, when I served at the junior high, I, I worried about the cash. So it, it, I hope that the, especially the middle schools are staffed appropriately, that, that this doesn't become, you know, an additional staffing concern given the activities. Right now, you know, with the, the COVID crisis, it, it's manageable, but kind of under a regular middle school activity, this, in other words, it needs monitoring over time.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director Courier.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? I had a couple. These three policies, I remember the last time I was on the policy review committee, it probably was two years ago, two, three years ago. And it's great to see these three policies finally coming to us, because I know what kind of a tangled block of yarn they, they really are with how they intermingle and the implications of each of them with the other, so thanks to the policy review committee for, for bringing this forward to us, because we, we obviously, with legislative changes, it's, it's time. I have one question, actually more of a comment on policy 905. For A, the site administrator is responsible for screening all such advertising appropriateness, et cetera, et cetera. I just feel like this is, you know, depending on what advertising might be coming into the school, I'd like to suggest that it should be a show, not a May. Because show has more emphasis than May, and it would be really unfortunate if some kind of advertising made its way into our schools, simply because it wasn't properly reviewed by the proper person. simply because it wasn't properly reviewed by the proper person.
Who's the word shall?
It, it isn't there. It says is responsible and I'm, I'm suggesting that it could be site administrator, site administrator shall screen all such advertising for appropriateness, et cetera, et cetera. If board members are open to that. Okay. That was all that I had. Thank you very much. Um, that we, uh, we will adjourn to a workshop about facilities with Dr. Battle, Lisa Ryder and Stacy Villaln.
Cheryl. We need to vote.
All right. Ms. Kenny, will you please call the roll?
Chester.
I.
Courier.
I.
Hume.
I.
Miller.
I.
Alt.
I.
Shots.
I. Thank you for your patience, guys.
Cheryl, one on the presentation, uh, I know we moved away from a, um, uh, a motion to adjourn when we went to virtual. Did we, did we search whether we need to do that for this, for that or not?
Um, I can still declare this. I mean, we can do it either way, but. Aaron, do you need a couple minutes?
No, we can go right into the workshop if you want. I'll use it.
Awesome. So I'll declare as adjourned and we will move directly to our workshop.
You can use either spot.
Yes. All we need to do is. What's that, I can use that? You can use the next one.
Without, without further ado, we're here tonight to, um, have another conversation about open facilities and I will turn it over to the three of you.
Thank you. Believe me, it's been quite a journey with open facilities. So we're here tonight to give you an update on our facilities planning. Um, Erin, I'm not sure we're showing. Is that a point?
We, I don't think I have a part of it. Lisa, do you have anything? Lisa should be able to run that.
And so we wanted to spend, uh, just a few moments just grounding everyone with the purpose, um, that we set for the facilities process, our commitments to the facilities process, and then we'll go through our agenda for tonight.
Do you have a question to share?
Sure, we will do that.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to the purpose that we set months ago for our open facilities process. First, we want to make sure we're maximizing the use of our property assets while leveraging our resources based on our district needs and always in consideration of our needs of our students, family and staff. And then our commitments that we made months ago as we began this process really was to our students, their, their learning and really optimizing, um, the best possible learning environment for our students. You go to next slide, Lisa. Engaging our community in the process and hearing from many voices. And opening transparent communication and decision-making process, looking at cost effectiveness of our resources and our facilities. And as we, we, our equity goals and to everything we do, it was essential to avoid the creation of inequities or racially and socially economically the, uh, identifiable schools. And so tonight we would like to review some items with you. We want to share some information and then provide some updates. Um, first, we want to make sure we review the board decisions and any pending decisions regarding open facilities. We want to give you the total financial picture for each property under consideration. Um, as Director Hume had mentioned, the legislative committee did receive information about a legislative exemption process and timeline. So we'll share that tonight with all of you. Next slide, Lisa. We have our guests from Ellers here tonight. They will give the current reality for the commercial real estate market. Uh, we had been in contact with the city of Eagan, which was a request from the last time we had a workshop was to get their preferences for development. We, the last time we had a workshop, we did outline a proposed process for broker services, um, as well as a redevelopment process. And we're going to give you an update with our discussions concerning the original request from 917 to add to the lease of Cedar School, um, usage on MW Savage and Sut Trail, which you kind of heard from our COVID report about how we're using it and it's, uh, really being used well for childcare. And then our best in Burnsville Alternative High School possible relocation. So with that, we have associated agenda items, um, that you see before you. So, um, we want to jump right to the next slide, which is the recap of the board decisions, um, or guidance, rather, I would say, from the April 23rd Board of Education, uh, workshop. It was, uh, decided to keep Diamond Head Education Center, pursue that lease of Cedar School, leverage Sut Trail and MW Savage, sell River Bridge Education Center, sell outlots at Diamond Head. And there was some further discussion about Metcalf at June 18th, the board workshop. And so that will be a pending decision and that's how we'll end the discussion tonight with getting your guidance about that. Uh, next slide. I turn it over to Lisa, who's want to go through that developer proposal process and the broker process. Along with Stacy.
Thank you. Um, this is taken from the scope of work that we have worked with Ellers to prepare, um, that they proposed, knowing that we are interested in outlets here at Diamond Head as well as potentially something at the Metcalf Middle School site. This is related to not broker services, but rather this is the facilitation of the redevelopment process, the developer solicitation. Uh, so you can see that number one is just that, helping us to facilitate that and helping the board to then, um, work through that process. And when the proposals do come through, then, you know, identifying the various things that may need to be vetted and, and, um, questions asked and things that nature number three talks about. The, um, Ellers and the district staff would review submissions jointly and provide comments for feedback to the developers. And a report would be prepared and summarized for purposes of review by the board for the selection of a developer. There would be project management that they would provide down in number five. Um, any negotiations, they would help us with that process. They would also work very closely with our, um, legal counsel. They know our legal counsel well and can work with them in many cases, um, for other clients as well. So those are the, that's the scope of the work that we have, um, currently written up between Ellers and IST 191 for those two purposes of Diamond Head and, um, Metcalf Middle School. Moving to the next slide is more about the broker process and steps. So we're in the process of preparing a request for proposal, um, so that we can seek those proposals from various potential brokers. Over the period of the last, probably from, I'm guessing it was last October, a year ago almost. Um, we've had certain people call into the district and ask questions and wonder about things and we've been keeping a list. And so, um, I spent the last week about 12 different video conferences with different folks, going through that list and making sure I understood, are they interested in an RFP we may put out there for broker services? Are they, um, representing a particular group? Are they, um, someone that just knows of or can help us with other things we may need? This is a wide variety. And so I've taken those notes and I'll put a summary together here for, um, purposes of the superintendent, um, to have and, and use as needed. I do know there's interest out there still of even renting some of our buildings, um, even on a short or maybe a long-term opportunity. One of the big questions that seems to keep coming up though is, um, if there's any restrictions upon who may utilize our facilities. And, um, and so that is something the board may want to consider maybe formally determining. Um, because that could either close the door for some of those, uh, the list or, or potentially keep that door open. It depends on what's decided.
Well, and I think, um, we've been pretty clear from the beginning about who we don't want to sell to.
No, we just don't have any formal action. So that indication has been shared.
Got it.
But that's, it's, it's.
The formal action part.
That's all I mean, like how.
Take action on who, who we would, who we would want to sell at least to versus who we wouldn't. Clear point.
We would, as we send out an RFP for broker services, um, we would then look for that, the board to make final selection of a broker. It's my anticipation that the broker services, once we would go down that path of first soliciting through a proposal process and then re-selecting, that we would certainly utilize that for the River Bridge Education Center as has been identified. But should there be anything else that comes up that is not a redevelopment or development and both the other process, then we would have a broker in play that could, could facilitate that process as well for us if there's something else that's needed. So that's the thinking at this time with relation to the broker and broker services. The next slide talks about our open facilities for Sut Trail and Mary and MW Savage. Both of those schools, as has been indicated in earlier reports this evening, are currently being utilized by our childcare needs for our all-day programming. When you have our Wednesdays and students of distance learning, we, I think the, um, registration is, is an uptick on that day as well as then the, you know, from that in-school Monday, Tuesday, I may be childcare Monday, Tuesday and vice versa on Thursday, ready for some families. So, um, this is serving our families well for those that need it. As you heard, um, Mr. Umhopper talk to today, you know, there's even a designer for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So that's something that, um, those two sites were really well and being able, and we still have some, we have room still. So, um, you know, if we were devoted distance learning, then you might consider, well, that it can be, and we become even more, which is true. But then we would also potentially have room at other elementary schools too to, to tap if we needed to, right? So, um, at this juncture, the Sut Trail and then, and Mary and MW Savage schools are fully being utilized. Our custodial staff that we do have right now, even after the receptions we made last year, there are enough custodial FTEs to help us with the MW Savage and MW Sut Trail location. But we do not have enough to keep Metcalf Middle School staffed for internal use at this time. They check it, they monitor it, but it's not necessarily staffed for, um, use. So if we have someone who's interested. So if we have someone who's interested in renting space, they're then needing to pay for that custodial time for someone to be present when they're there at Metcalf Middle School.
Can I ask just a clarification? So for possible expansion program to address our six, seven, and eight, that's just as a result of the hybrid of distance learning. It's not like we're seeing an expansive middle school.
So we only offered since March eighteenth for infants through fifth grade, but now as more families are going back to work, they are asking to expand it to seventh, six, seven, and eight.
Some families are uncomfortable with the students being at home for so many days.
And it's, it's an unfilled need, really, that I know I've been hearing about.
Yeah, that might be perfect.
Good question. Thank you.
The next slide talks about our internal or leased buildings. And I just wanted to be able to show you, we've touched on this in the past, but I wanted to make it clear. For instance, right now, we have a lease four-and-seater building. And with that lease, it continues through this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. So we go through twenty twenty-two, June. That lease is made up of two parts. It's made up of the rent portion, which is base rent. And then it's made up of what we call CAM or Common Area Maintenance. And so the common area maintenance dollar amount is coming into the general fund account, while the debt service fund is where the rent is going. And that's kind of back to that conversation around any sale proceeds or rental that needs to go to the debt service fund. So this is occurring on an annual basis. And I just wanted to point that out as to what that looks like. So then what happens in the general fund is the cost for maintenance items and for custodial actual services are coming out of that general fund as well. So it's not as if that two hundred twenty-one thousand you see there over two years is all proceeds. There are offsetting expenditures to that as well. With the internal use of Sut Trail for our childcare and MW Savage as well, clearly there's no outside funding coming in there. And I just wanted to make mention of how these buildings may be used will largely depend on our needs around COVID and what that looks like for us. We held off on Metcalf Middle School in doing anything with regard to not having it available for our middle school should we have needed it. And so that's, that's just still something that, you know, should circumstances change or we're doing some different type of educational model, then there's still the potential need there. The Cedar lease renewal, we anticipate would begin to be addressed during fiscal year twenty-two. And then we wouldn't have that conversation until we get closer to that, like of next July. We still understand that there is that possibility of a request for expansion of the rental of Cedar Building by nineteen seventeen. But we will just have to wait until July and see if that still is in existence then. With that.
I have the next slide. The legislative, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so I have the next slide. So there was a request from the Legislative Committee after discussion of, look to see if we could, any sales proceeds, we would need legislative approval to move it to the general fund. So there is statute that guides that. And so you see the reference there in the link. There was a similar transfer, not exactly of what we might, of what you might request from Ogilvy School District. They did transfer a dollar amount, I believe it was eight hundred thousand. You see, I'm gonna pull it up. I can't see that far.
Oh, the amount is eight hundred thousand even, yes.
Yes, okay, I can see it here on my screen. And it was just to transfer up to eight hundred thousand from its debt redemption fund to its undesigned needed general fund balance. So we, in consultation with Senator Greg Clausen, we did get some more information. You want the actual bill, so we should have one of your local representatives sponsor the bill. Meet with these appropriate legislatures to legislators to share the intent. The bill must have that appropriate person who will bring it to the legislative body. There is support to make sure that the bill is in the proper legal form. And so that's the service to make sure it meets all their requirements. Then the bill will be introduced to the E twelve Education Committee. Then board members, representatives, myself and Lisa would have to testify at that hearing. We should actually have information about the properties, the sale, how we intend to use the sale proceeds, and also give the rationale about why we were selling the properties. And then the committee would answer questions. The committee, E twelve committee, would recommend action. We will approve, either approve or disapprove. You would hope that both sides would have the same bill and not make any changes. But if either side makes a change, then it goes to conference committee. But there's three readings required for any bill. And then there's the vote, and then it goes to the governor to sign. So in a nutshell, Lisa, did I miss anything about the legislative process? I think that covers.
Dr. Matt, I think the legislative committee also talked about the bill, I'm not afraid that the bill doesn't have to be super specific. I think you said that it doesn't have like, not.
Yes, there's no sun setting. No, was it, was it any sun setting? No, with that example, just a dollar amount, you don't have to list the properties. Most of that detail will come out at the E twelve committee.
Really impact, River Ridge, and we decided to sell Metcalf.
Sell the land, Outlots, and it can't go to the capital within your general fund. Okay, it isn't designated.
Right.
Whether you're moving it from A or B, you're moving into the general. And just so the rest of board members know, and I've mentioned this, I've had the opportunity to speak with a number of candidates running currently. And I've made sure that they're aware that this should be on their agenda, that they're going to be witness. And they have Clausen's done a good job of cross-communicating about this. But if you do have that opportunity, do the same so that we get a better department.
That's great. Thank you. I think we have our guest up next for the next few slides.
So Stacy, if you want to.
Hi Stacy.
Stacy from Ellers is here also to be able to speak to our current redevelopment and development outlook from an Ellers perspective.
Well, good evening, everyone. Lovely to see you all again. It's been quite a while. So hopefully you've all had an enjoyable summer with all things COVID or at least been able to enjoy being outside a bit here. Just a quick overview on the current development redevelopment outlook that we see, especially when it pertains to the sites that you are looking at. I would say with regards to your main building is that essentially, I think the outlook for that is very good. Because what we discussed and what we found from the development community, that it was predominantly probably a multifamily housing site. And I can tell you that that work has not slowed. It has actually probably increased pretty significantly just over the last six months. I think with all developers or most developers, especially in the multifamily market, you know, they're all very optimistic about the future of the development and the outlook. They're, you know, when they do projects, they're really looking two years out in their pipeline because that's typically the time from when they start to undertake it to when they fully get under construction, get that project financed. So they're always trying to bring things into that, that pipeline. And I think everyone is seeing or being optimistic that we will work through the COVID and the pandemic issues. And that hopefully, you know, end of twenty twenty-one or into twenty twenty-two is going to be a much, much better year. So the multifamily housing market is very, very strong. I'd also say what we just heard recently on a podcast with some other developers is that we're seeing quite a bit of flight to the suburbs for multifamily housing. I think just without the civil unrest that was happening in Minneapolis, they're seeing some folks that are choosing to move out based upon certain decisions and things that are happening there. So again, I think the market remains strong for that. When we look at whatever your future decision is going to be around Metcalf, we are looking at that's, you know, a house, a site that not only is single-family residential nature, but potentially could be multifamily. But in the past, we talked about, is there possibility for some commercial use on that site, which there is the potential? Well, that is the one thing in this pandemic that has really taken a hit. And so we have seen pretty much a stop on a lot of commercial and office development as everyone's really taking a pause to figure out what does it mean and what is the new normal for that market. Retail in general has always been a little bit fickle as far as end use. And now especially office, we've seen a lot of the big office users or projects that we're planning to move forward have been put on pause and hold. Again, as people are trying to figure out what is our future and our workspace needs? Are they open environments? Are more people going to just be working from home? Do they need to downsize, et cetera? I think the good thing for you guys is that there is still, you know, interest in both of your sites. As you know, adjacent to Metcalf, there is some tired retail strip centers there. And several developers have been looking and negotiating with the current property owners there. That portion is actually located in Burnsville with Metcalf located in Eagan. And I think that they're looking for a larger play for the redevelopment. So they're curious and just waiting to see what you guys decide as a board and what you need in Metcalf. Is it a portion of the site that you're going to sell or are you looking to sell all of it? And then they will look to work and propose accordingly with regards to that. So just in general, I'd say overall, still very optimistic about the development outlook for anywhere here in the suburban areas.
Stacy, you want to go into the next slide?
So then the next slide shows us the summary of our open facilities for sale as of September twenty twenty. So I, there are different colors. Colors separate each assumption. So the first being that of River Ridge. And just reiterating the numbers that we talked about previously, the sale proceeds at that time were estimated around a million dollars with broker fees at six percent. River Ridge debt, we know there is existing as a June thirty twenty twenty. There would be anticipated moving costs necessarily with our best program from River Ridge and possibly having to retrofit where they're moving to of three hundred thousand. So I'm showing them in two different columns what would have to come out of our general fund somewhere and how much would come and be to come on our deals with our debt service fund, whether it's proceeds going there or the debt being paid from there. The next project that we talked about is the Diamond Head Outlot, up to four acres, estimates based on that. This was assumed that just basically taking double what we had discussed previously around two acres. I don't know how realistic exactly that will be, but that's, that's what I did there. But the possible cost for renovation necessary due to parking and access, this is maybe new based on the conversations we've had in the past. But we do know that our main entry to our senior center area as well as our community education and enrollment entry is right at that lower level on the lower lot of our parking from Hillsbury. And so that's just something to consider that that may require some internal work if that is not the case any longer. And then we have the next project being Metcalf Middle School with the option of just a lot of ten acres, for example, potentially being sold with the proceeds then coming to the general fund as that would be land alone. I'm sorry, I failed to mention the fact that DEC Outlot would also be intended to come to the general fund. Then under the fourth item listed there, it is the Metcalf Middle School, the capacity of one hundred buildings and thirty-five acres. So the building and acreage being sold, the estimate used previously is reflective under the debt service column along with the debt that we know is still remaining on that building as of June thirty twenty twenty. All of the proceeds that are listed here are estimates at this time. So just wanted to kind of give you a one-pager that would allow you to kind of refresh what were we talking about previously and what that looks like.
At least a couple of points of clarification.
Yes.
So when you say general fund amount for specifically for the Outlots and, oh, Outlots in both places, I guess. Just back to the conversation we were just previously having, that would go to the general fund, but it would go to a newer part of the general fund, right, for capital only.
After current law, it would go to the capital.
It would not be able to apply to, say, higher multi teachers persons.
True.
Unless they have the legislative exception.
True.
And I'm just trying to understand, you have two scenarios here in the same table, if I'm reading this correct, right? Is the Outlaws, Outlots at Metcalf? And then that's the white, the one million.
Yeah.
And then the second below that would be the complete sale of Metcalf, correct?
The third and the fourth indicated that would be either or, correct? It would be like a and, yes.
Yeah, that's an either or situation. And so to the column on the right, with the debt, so for instance, with the complete sale of Metcalf, proceeds being estimated at two point six, but then debt to be paid is eight point two. So with that being there, that we would literally be writing a check for seven point four to debt services in this scenario, right?
In all of these cases, your debt schedule's not going to change. If you sell, like if I sold my home, for example, typically you have to pay off that mortgage before you can do anything, right? And you can't reply. That's a little different for us. If you sell a building, for example, that has debt attached to it, no matter what, that debt schedule is still going to be scheduled as it has been and will continue until the time that debt is done. So that is not going to change for us. It does require though that the proceeds that you would receive in that sale would need to go to the debt service fund, which would then automatically be offsetting on that levy document. You'd see that those proceeds would go against that fund and they do what they call an excess.
So the eight point two is a planned mortgage payment that we'd be making regardless of, for brevity sake. I don't remember if it's a plan.
Yes.
That is a planned mortgage debt payment that we're going to be making, continue to make regardless of.
The asset would be gone, but we'd be making a payment, yes.
But what, what the legislation, the current legislation says is that the two point six then would also have to kick into that same bond and not come back over to the general.
Correct.
All right, so I'm just a little, yeah, I mean, I know it's a very challenging thing to visualize. And that's why I'm, see, when we're going to get to this, when we get to the bottom part, but I'm going to be very adamant about this and I'll reiterate it again. If we don't get this legislative exemption, I'm at a completely different perspective alone when we're looking at these properties. I'm not interested in selling these just so I can write a check to retire a bunch of, you know, mortgage debt. That's, that's not the point here. Point is to provide opportunities for our students and provide more teachers and maintain the program that we have. Anyway, we'll get there.
And I think also the other point, Lisa, that you alluded to is each of these, each of our buildings have debt. So, you know, this, this reality is true for any building that we might consider leasing or selling, that debt is going to continue to exist. The question is use and ongoing costs, both in terms of operational costs to keep the building, at least not allowing the pipes to freeze in the winter time. But then if a building is mothballed, what's the expense involved with reopening a mothballed building? And, you know, that's, that's the other, that's the way, that's down the road. But, you know, there, I just wanted to make the point that each of our buildings has debt. And so I, I think we need, we just need to be mindful of that.
Can we go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Because. So to sell the whole thing of Metcalf, including thirty-five acres is two point six. But if we sold ten acres of an Outlot, we'd get a million. I don't know, the price just seems like we should be getting, we should be making more by selling more.
I think having Stacy here is helpful. I mean, my take on it is that this is their best guidance.
Yeah.
The market might do something different.
Okay.
And if you take, if those, those of us that have taken time to look at the value of commercial property in our area, the market can do something else. So. But appreciating the conservative approach that the Ellers has taken, because that's what we need.
Yeah, because, because I, you know, depending on the scenario, so if we chose doing the ten acres, our scenario, this is a, our general fund would have two point six and we would have debt fund amount, you know, with River Ridge, but we would still have to put that on the whole debt, the whole eight point two, right?
It's ongoing debt. And depending on what we decide to do with the proceeds of the land sale, either the debt will shrink slightly or we will continue to make those payments and we'll use that, that money to do something else. Either the debt will shrink slightly um or we will continue to make those payments and we'll use that that money to do something else.
Oh, okay.
So this next slide, um you during this discussion, you identified some implications. This list is not exhaustive, but we wanted to update you on a couple of implications. Um let's start from the bottom. The city of Eagan may not have a demolition grant. If you remember when you had Jenny Faulkman here from Burnsville, they they do have grant money. So I'm not sure if we got a final answer from Eagan yet. We're still checking with them. And I don't know if Stacy.
Stacy, do you know for sure whether Eagan even has that available?
Um Eagan does not have demolition grants available, no. Um the demolition grants that you're receiving from the city of Burnsville or that would be available from Burnsville uh is specific uh to them uh due to their landfill site that they have in their community.
Um and Stacy, while you're there, you uh at the last workshop, you made reference that it would take time to prepare for partial or full sale. Can you elaborate more on that, please?
Uh yes, um essentially, uh because uh it the property for Metcalf is currently uh zoned as public facilities. You would have to go through a rezoning process. You don't have to do that per se if you guys choose to sell a portion or all of that site. The developer who you are selling that to will take it through that process. But it does take time and it could be, you know, uh three to nine months, just depending on what they're planning to build there and getting through the approval process. Whereas what we have with the deck site is that essentially the zoning is already in place. If you guys want to sell that property for multifamily use or commercial use or whatever, um you end up selling it for at the end of the day. So uh Eagan is a little bit longer term uh play for for redevelopment because of just the timing to to get through the public approval processes for a rezoning and comprehensive plan change.
And then the last slide is a tentative timeline, so I'm glad you talked about that uh because the Eagan, it would take a little bit more. Um but we're looking at here to get some finalization, um if not September, October. Especially about whether we want to sell River Ridge, um some form of action. And then begin this broker process based on your decision would go through December. Um going back to the legislative exception, we would start that in November right away and we'd have to get that in place. The only thing with that, we don't know if everything the legislature is dealing with, how long it would take. So that could be met for June, if that's your preference to have that in place first. Um and that's why we put January through May for the legislature. And then next year, uh then going to December twenty, do we have that right? Yeah, December twenty twenty one. But as Stacy just said, it could be even longer than that, you're going into twenty two, twenty twenty two. And with that, the next steps are turning it over to you.
So um I know we have questions along the way. Were there any other remaining questions that people have?
Yes, Darcy. Yeah, okay, so a couple. Uh okay, so we talked about the Sutrel and M W Savage are in use now. And you and you indicated partial use, you know, we still have space, whatever. And so is there, um I don't remember the board direction being um that we would that would use those for internal partnerships only, um especially in light of conversations about we still are interested in leasing them out. So but that's fine, but um so, because I I guess we want to clarify. Are we open to leasing them out or are we going to keep them as as internal use? Because the presentation has more things in it. And so I'm not sure if the staff is, if we're unclear if we give direction, if we didn't really talk about it or or where that disconnect is. And so um that's one bit piece of it, um if we want to. The other piece, I think is really more of a question of what percentage of Sutrel and M W Savage are in use right now? Um because we're talking about adding some, maybe possibly adding some six to eight programming, um which you know is great. But do we still have then use to lease out? Do we still have space then to lease out? Are we only going to use half of each of those spaces? We can still lease out half that kind of thing. So those two things, I think, probably need some clarification um for us to move forward with those two sites especially.
So currently we are utilizing on a daily basis like the lower level of Sutrel and a few rooms upstairs as well. Um the gym, the cafeteria fully in use and and um food and nutrition has moved all of their product out of the food and places. But they're being available now for for child um or for childcare purposes. Over at um Mary W Savage, they're in the four hundred room, if you're familiar with that building. And so they're over by the media center more and they're not using the full building at this point in time. But I also know that as they began this process, they weren't sure exactly of the demand, right? So um they're still in the process of trying to determine how how much that demand might change. You know, we're we're not quite yet into that week where all of our students are are in house for hybrid. So um I think it's been a matter of although this group has been doing childcare since March, um they and they've been at Metcalf, oh sorry, Mary W Savage and Sutrel throughout the summer months. They've got that down pretty well, but as they grow, their registrations continue to come in. They're working through them and they're still working kind of badly about, you know, trying to get through and keep up with all the family requests. So there is, there's still a little time needed for us to determine exactly what is that true need that exists at this moment with our families. Um it has been understood that we needed to make sure that we could deliver on that need for our families. And so um administratively, we've moved forward with utilizing those two buildings for this purpose. Should the board make a decision that um there's a desire to rent externally and we have an interested party and that's what needs to happen? We'll have to retool and figure that out. Um so that's that's something that, you know, can be decided. I do know after my dozen calls, there's interest. And when you ask exactly which building, they'll say whichever is available, you know?
So does it, so kind of as a thought then to that if we, well, not only do we not, are we not like fully into hybrid mode? We also, what happens if we have to go all virtual, you know, for some, you know, for some period of time too? How does that change the demand? I don't know if it would reduce it or or increase it, you know? So because we are then taking on, it can't really, I guess it can't really increase it too much because then we're actually taking on, you know, uh the virtual academy students, you know, so it'd have to be.
And you still have the social distancing.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so we, yeah.
People maybe wouldn't want to make too many decisions about Sutrel or M W until hopefully they have a vaccine. And it would move beyond the most immediate.
Yeah, which could be six months.
Could be two months or maybe three years if you want to, right?
Oh, thanks, God. Yeah, and I don't know, but um the so and and we have them at two different sites for purposes of convenience for those families on each on each end of the district, okay?
That's the primary reason. We could, we could have contained them all in one site, but the convenience was the main reason for continuing both.
Right.
Um the the challenge, the biggest challenge we have right now at this moment is staffing. Getting enough staff hired to to make it work, not just if we were. If we had just Sutrel and M W Savage doing childcare, that'd be simple.
Yep.
We don't. We have those two sites throughout the day, but we also have before and after school here at every elementary school for convenience of our families and to avoid cross contamination of students at different locations and on buses. So all of that's happening at the same time, so that's causing the strain more than anything.
Sure.
If we were entirely distance learning and we were functioning at those two sites, we'd be okay.
Yep.
Well, and some of the things that would be maybe be in the before and after school, like Matt Rock makes, built of the childcare on Wednesdays.
As they do there, yep.
Okay.
Which is where you can see some of the uptick too.
So before before you move on, Darcy, I just want to, this kind of connects to your question about M W and Sutrel.
Yeah.
Um in terms of what we've discussed and what we're currently experiencing. Um. It might be another conversation about how do we want to use, I, because I I I feel, you know, on the one hand, we need to make sure that we're serving our families and their childcare needs. At the same time, there was clear um vision for how we would use those two schools. And COVID has kind of jumbled everything up.
Oh, but one of all for Sutrel was actually in terms of going to childcare.
Yes, yep, yep.
So we are technically performing our, you know, what we intended, but just with us.
So we.
And as you know, the why, you may have seen me going to these computer centers.
Oh, pods, yeah.
Yeah, that's what they decided to work on, but we at the same time knew the need and we're able to provide.
So we at the, we at this point need all of our sites as they are. Like we, we really probably couldn't combine Sutrel and M W Savage for purposes of, so like because of social distancing. We couldn't really combine everybody into one building.
I mean, it 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 could feasibly be done, but you're eliminating an extra cafeteria and an extra gym.
Yes, exactly.
The same with the number of kids, right?
Yeah, right, exactly. So that's a sort of practicality that we, we can't, you know, for the health and safety reasons, we can't really we can't really combine. So we need all of this.
Well, also for equity and access. I mean, it'd be really hard to have someone from Savage from the Eagan or the.
Sure, yeah, so yeah, for and so sort of like, there's multiple reasons, but you know, even, you know, even though equity is, you know, our strong or certainly our strong drivers, we just can't for health and safety reasons under, you know, to be able to safely accommodate all those, all those kids. Okay, so we really can't, that is, that's a move forward until we have the ability to not have to do that. Right? I mean, so we can, I mean, that's, we can't move forward with combining sites, with um leasing space. And because we can't even, we couldn't even lease part of um Sutrel or M W Savage now because we can't put more people into those buildings probably, or at least not, probably not as many as the, whatever board wants to lease it would like.
We were, we were prepared to have a room or two or three that would maybe be head start peopleizing it while we're also doing childcare.
Yep.
But if you're talking about like a whole floor, you just need to coordinate that well. And then it would limit our, our, right now, we're able to serve not just our tier one families, but all families who are needing childcare.
Right, yeah, and we, and as you said, we don't know what that demand's going to be in the next week or two or four. And so, okay. So then, so then really our 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 priority is we have to, we have to serve our our internal families and our internal childcare needs until such time as we are able to safely not have to do that. At which point then we can start looking at the outside partners um for sale, lease, whatever. But until that time, we have no, we have no choice because we have that commitment to our families to to do this. Does that sound like kind of where we're at with this?
I think it's important to draw the line in the sand that we're kind of where we are right now because of the pandemic and wanting to be safe and 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 still serve. And at the same time, when we're not in under these limitations, we really need to look at how else we can, we can use those.
Absolutely, right, yeah. So it's just not, it's always a discussion that just has to be tabled until sometime we can, we can have, we can have that discussion. And so, but because staff really needs some, some sort of timeline or some guidelines at which point to know whether to pursue those opportunities that Lisa's been um been contacted with, so. Okay, because I just really want to understand how much of that we were using, you know, and what as we as a board are going to give um staff as priorities for use of that space, so.
So if I might ask a clarifying question, you're speaking primarily of Sutrel and M W Savage.
Right, yeah, yep, exactly, yeah, because those are the two, the two properties in question that people have had an interest in and that we have been in our um on the plan of what are we going to do with that? And what are we going to do with those two properties? At this point, we have district need for them. And so until such time we don't have district um need for them because of the childcare commitments that we have and due to our health and safety spacing needs, then then any discussion of sale or lease or anything is kind of off the table until such time we don't have those requirements. And then we can pursue, and at least at that point, the board can can decide, do we still want to keep them for something? Do we want to sale or lease or things like that? But until then, we don't have any options. Um we just don't have the option to do anything but but hang on to them for for childcare needs, so. Okay, I think that was, that was really, I guess, my big question about this, what were we gonna do with those two properties?
Great question. Thank you, Darcy. Any others?
Yeah, there's a lot of M W or.
Anything in your mind?
Well, I think we have some of the things we need to, this is looking for direction from other stuff tonight.
Yes.
So no, not not off the top of my head, I mean, let's see the chemistry.
Okay, so um I know Lisa, you alluded to some, not being quite sure about River Ridge, but I I want to check in with board members. River Ridge, we're pretty clear that we're selling, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um the Diamond Head Outlets, we're gonna continue to move forward with.
Yes.
Until such time as we discover that perhaps four acres may work.
Good question. Now, um what Stacy was sharing, was she referring to some of those lots as being the the multi housing? That would be at Diamond Head? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was going to be our preference, okay?
Yeah, Diamond Head would be multi-family Metcalf.
Multi-family too, or just being a commercial or?
Stacy, you still there? Did you hear that question?
Yep, I'm still here. Uh River Ridge, um because of its location, I mean, its best reuse is probably for you to sell that property for another office user uh for that site. Um it's not really an area where multifamily development would happen, and I don't think that add and what the expectations are for the market.
Uh so then we know that um Cedar continues to be leased, that'll be a future discussion. Um and then that kind of leaves us with Metcalf, um the out, the concept of question of um outlets, ten acres versus thirty five acres of the entire property.
Yeah, I'm with Eric on the, um I I was a holdout before for ten, just the ten acres in case we needed the whole the whole, we need the building in the future. Um but I've uh come around to the entire um to the entire property up for sale. But I'm with Eric on the, if we are just, if that's just going into a um debt service payment, then that is not um it's it's better for us to mothball it and then make decisions at other point in time. Leslie, I see you shaking.
Well, I I agree, you know, I I I think I've always had a part time, mostly it's like I have an over extension on my loan and I was getting rid of my property, but I still have to make payments, you know? It's like, so did I actually solve my problem?
Well, and I think that the, where we are is that, you know, our reality is that we have debt.
Yes.
And we also need to reduce our costs. And so that's where, you know, and Teresa, you mentioned equity in terms of, you know, our planning. And we're going back to the two model, you know, two middle school model school district. What kind of equity can we introduce, you know, can we support and sustain in terms of learning and access? And, you know, stability for our families and our students and our staff. And at the same time, with the legisla, if the legislative exception doesn't happen, I just don't know.
I mean, I I I'd like to be very blunt about this. Anything that involves a sale should come with a caveat, in my opinion, should come with a caveat that it has to wait to make sure we have legislative intention in place. We don't want to get caught in a situation where we agree to sign and sell something and then find out we, because, I mean, as much as I respect what goes on in St. Paul, they can be sometimes pick a, and you know, the winds can blow the ways they didn't expect. So that should be a critical piece of our expectations, has to come after we have that listed. I know there's a chicken egg or scarp situation here, but we have to play that very carefully.
I think there might be one caveat that I would, I I tend to agree with you. The only caveat that I would add to that is, um well, number one, the Diamond Head Outlets. Right, we can just. Right? We can just take that and then go right into capital. Um, River Ridge, you know, it doesn't have a whole lot of debt associated with it. Um, wouldn't we necessarily need to take a legislative exemption to sell that big building? Maybe wait for a legislative exemption down the road to consider Metcalf and something else or not, you know?
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. I'd be okay with that. I just, um, just because it's going into capital, I mean, to me, the, the critical opportunity here is to continue enough to be able to provide, um, you know, the, the programming that we offer those students. Um, capital is not going to directly do that. Um, uh, and I, it would hate to be in a circumstance where, you know, five, six years from now, we're looking at money in a fund for laying off teachers and closing down programs and stuff, and we're looking at the excess in capital and having to spend it on something we maybe didn't really even need, but we got to do it if anything, you know?
Yes.
So, um, I, that would be an okay solution, a preferable solution as it goes into the general fund where we can not have to need to see budget cuts next time around what we've had to do the last two years.
Scott, I see you nodding your head.
I agree, yes. Um, you brought this up a couple of times tonight, but the ongoing expenses that we have at Metcalf. So, and I was thinking, it's not just, uh, keeping height from freezing, but I assume that it would still be included in the long-term facilities management, which we discussed earlier tonight. So there are going to be projects with that that are going to cost potentially many, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars.
There was another.
Property in that, it would still got to keep, uh, the roof not leaking.
So the, 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 the operational costs outside of LTFM, so there's LTFM for upkeep and the boilers and all of that, which we plan for and we can, you know, push those back.
Still be on the schedule, that's cool, it'll still be on the schedule.
That's cool, it'd still be on the schedule. And eventually, if we opened it up, it would still need those updates. But the operational costs, I think this is from.
Yeah, they're going to be about 180,000 to 200,000.
They're two, well, so Metcalf, the last, the last number we got was 200,000. And River Ridge is 30. And Metcalf represents the greatest operational costs of, if you're comparing Diamond Head, Metcalf and River Ridge.
So I think to Scott's point, you're also avoiding, now I'm just making this up, so I don't know what the schedule is, but you're avoiding the possibility that in three years from now, you're, you've got a long-range plan of putting a new roof on Metcalf at a half a million dollars or something.
Right.
Whatever it is. That, that goes off the table, I mean, and those funds actually become available to other long-range programs in the district.
So I think when we had our last, I was still very undecided about Metcalf, but I definitely, at this moment, will be leaning towards, let's solve the whole thing. I think especially if you look at the enrollment numbers and projections and how small the younger grades are compared to the older grades, we're not going to be a three middle school district anytime soon, I think.
So, I was, maybe there's a rationale, maybe we talked about, um, if we, if we, um, we're talking about like, you know, having leasing of, um, uh, Sutrel and MW. Is, what's the rationale on the lease Metcalf? Like to say in the bills or, you know, something which could then feed into our facilities, you know, as a partnership? So like they're leasing our facility to, you know, do things where we're going to get income from there. Kind of like what we do at, um, Cedar School, you know, I'm just, I'm just.
I don't know, I don't know that there's kind of a request.
So there's, there's not a request for the entire building. Most often I'm hearing, um, it's rather large, so they're not sure that, unless you're talking about a potential competitor. Now, um, there is interest however in, like, you know, I could use 10 to 20,000 square feet. Um, and, and I'd be willing to rent that out, you know, tomorrow, if that's the case. Um, and so can we, can we facilitate some partnerships where, you know, someone's, they might be only utilizing, say, the gym and the other state gyms, and they need them during the summer months and then they need them after school hours, because that's when they would be running programming. Um, could that be done while at the same time utilizing other spaces for, um, you know, delivery of services to our community? But totally different individuals, but they could coexist. You know, that was actually heard throughout the last week. And so, I mean, if that were something you're open to, you know, we could, we could facilitate that process very quickly.
But we still have then the maintenance costs, the, um, long-term, you know, facilities costs, you know, things like that, that we would have to, whatever we would do to lease, um, the space, would have to, uh, you know, at least break even, at least cover those costs as, um, and ideally make some money.
Right, so we are not staffing that for utilization, so if somebody is going to do that, they would need to be paying for the time that the student is present. Absolutely. That would be part of our CAM charges.
Right.
The rental piece, um, because we still have debt on that building, would go to the, this, that seven, debt service. But the CAM, that would be necessary to offset the cost of bringing someone in, can you also have that CAM cover a portion of utilities? Sure. Will we cover the, the full amount of the operating expenses? Maybe not with just what I spoke of, but if there's other interests and we're open to that, could we do more? We could do more. You know, that building has the square portion and then you have the round portion, and it just depends on the, the need of who's interested in the space as to what they're, they're looking at. Currently, um, you know, two different parties, two different interests, and that would, that could, that could work. Could there be a third or a fourth? I don't know.
So I think there's two things to think about when we're talking about this. One, it would require committing internal resources to some degree. If we're just renting one room or two rooms out, collect a check once a month, you know, it lays on us. But if we get involved in some other programming and stuff, now we're having to commit internal resources to that, align to that and such. And then the second thing I would say is, um, the question would be, why are we doing that? And, you know, for me, there's really only two answers to that, potential answers. One, and, and it's really the question is, why are we keeping the building, right? Cause we're not, I, I think it, we, there may be a possibility where we could find something that have a plus side to the district, but there's nothing on the table or out of our awareness. So that, so it becomes a matter of doing it just to keep maintaining the building. And, and one, we're keeping the building because we believe we have future use for it. Um, I think, I have a very strong opinion about that, or we, I think we've had that conversation. And the second would be potentially to keep the building because we believe that a future sale would be more beneficial than a current sale of that building. I don't know that we have any indication that that's going to be any kind of significant. I mean, obviously, it always will look a little bit, but, uh, so that I just want to set, set the tone of the conversation, that I think that's the only, you know, the only reason why we would consider doing that, if, if we believe in one of those two scenarios.
The other would mean that we're going to pay down the debt, so that when we do choose to sell in the future, we actually give our property.
Over that. Right, because we're kind of back to what we just talked about a few minutes ago about Metcalf, that, you know, it's beneficial to sell now if we get the favorable legislative decision. But if we don't, if that doesn't happen, then perhaps we're back to a lease situation where we, we lease it out, um, to pay down the debt, to cover whatever it is, and then keep lobbying, um, whatever's going to happen. And then at some point, we have a more favorable, um, sales position, at which point perhaps we might even be in a more favorable commercial development, um, situation as well than what we find ourselves today. So, um, so that, that does, that does make sense, because we're going to make more in the sale if we have a legislative exemption. And then we eliminate, um, we eliminate the, um, we eliminate, you know, the, the long-term costs, the operational costs, the after-lease, the roof, you know, that sort of thing going forward. It's just, it's, it's gone and then we don't, we are setting the money to, to pay down the debt. You know, if we don't have a legislative, um, benefit, then we do have a way to hang on to the property, um, pay down some of the debt and cover our costs in there until we have a more favorable. And then also neither of those two things, um, so is that, that legislative exemption also kicks in if it's just the 10, just the 10 acre outlots or is that for the whole?
We wouldn't want to do it unless we.
We want to do any of it, right?
Okay, that's why I want to include everything.
Okay, that's what I, okay, that's what I thought, but I just want to make sure that we, we're talking it to us the different things. Okay.
We, we verified that we could basically say, we're going to have money available, and we want to use it, use the general fund. We don't have to be, you know, that would come up in the committee discussions, so we don't have to be too specific about it.
Okay.
I think the only, just so you know, the only possible concern that I have is demonstrated example was 800,000. I, I can't believe that's the only one we could find in recent time or whatever. And we're talking about, you know, millions of dollars here, so that could be a potential, some hurdle if some legislator decides that they want to, you know, make a, a problem.
Sure, which is, you know, and again, then we, if that's the case, we have a, we have, we can hang on to it in person at some point, you know, we have a more favorable climate in which to sell, redevelop, otherwise, you know, have, have more of a benefit of it. But, um, it's a little bit, we're in sort of a good position now kind of either way, because we can do something with the property. Um, if we need to, if we don't have a favorable sales, um, ruling environment.
And I think also the fact that we know, Stacy mentioned that there is a developer talking with the neighboring, um, sagging, you know, I'm sorry, weary, I can't remember the adjective that she's dilapidated, the property next door. Um, we know that somebody's talking with that owner and, um, there's, you know that there's going to be synergy between what's going on there and what's going on at Metcalf, which would lead itself to another meeting. Um, but, you know, I mean, it, you're right, Darcy, that, you know, we should go after this, see what we can do. Um, and I think, um, I think, well, pretty much what I'm hearing is in terms of where we want to go is we want to pursue, um, the sale of, of all of Metcalf, the Diamond Head Outlets and River Ridge with the legislative exemption. Um, oh, sorry. Um, and the caution is that if the legislative exemption does not come our way, then we need to regroup and, you know, basically know that we're going to be looking at leasing property um, until such time as we can get a legislative exemption. Um, I really think there's opportunity though now with, with the conversations that are going on next door.
Yeah, and, and, and clearly there's interest in, in different properties as you've, as you've found, and that's, that's new information for me. And so that's, that's exciting for us to be able to have a plan B for these properties, um, for the time being and see what happens with them.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Just to remind your record career, still on the Zoom.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry.
Just, I might want to clear it, but also.
I was looking to see if she was still here.
We're paying like $20,000 a year approximately.
I'm still here.
DeeDee, I'm sorry.
What, what are you paying per year on the debt from Metcalf? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Um.
I'm trying to call her.
I want to say the debt payment here, I think.
Trying to compare that.
I think it was like 500,000.
Okay.
I think that's what it is on, on that particular building, yeah.
Okay, thanks, just curious, how that compares to what we're going to be paying anyway for the, to keep the building functioning.
Got it. DeeDee, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's been interesting to listen.
Do you have any questions or comments, DeeDee, or even break?
I, I'm, I'm inclined to sell Metcalf as a total package. Um, and I, I'm, I'm always impressed with, I think we'll get more for Metcalf than that figure that was up there. What was that, 2.8 million or whatever is, I think we'll get more than that. Um, and I'm not so pessimistic with our finances. Um, so, but I don't know when it will go, so I may not even get to vote for it, so. Um, but the conversation and interaction has been interesting.
I'm sorry if you felt left out, DeeDee.
No, I didn't. I enjoyed, I enjoyed listening and watching.
So, um, board members, any other comments or questions? Teresa, Lisa, do you have any questions?
Do you have clarification? Stacy, do you need any?
I, I will just say that I think this is a significant enough thing, I don't need a vote, but I want to officially say that I agree with your summarization situation. I would appreciate everybody else putting their two cents in on that if that.
Yeah.
Okay. We're moving in the right direction.
Okay.
Great. All right.
Okay.
Good. All right. Thank you, everybody. Boy, we had a good, long hybrid first back.
Yeah.
Thank you, and we'll, we'll see you guys soon.
Thanks, Stacy.
Nice to see you all.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Stacy.